Okay, welcome everybody. Thanks for coming to City Council meeting on August 2nd, 2022. Thanks for joining us in the council chambers and on TV. We appreciate you being here. We'll get started with our agenda. The first thing that we do is we're going to ask Councilman Marshall has invited somebody for the prayer, and then after that Councilman Euler has the pledge.
Nate, Nate the Great, the best.
Mr. Nate Reed.
Our Heavenly Father, we are grateful to be gathered here today. We're thankful to live in this wonderful country and beautiful city where we can express views and listen to one another. We pray that we might have peace here today and understanding that we might all be able to listen and understand one another and that there will be consensus in this meeting. We are grateful for this time of year and the celebrations that are taking place. We pray for safety and for peace in this wonderful land, and we offer this prayer humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Good night.
Will you stand and repeat after me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next agenda item is becoming like a regular thing here in Spanish Fork. We hope it remains a regular item on our agenda. Every like six months or so, we get to welcome in what we're dubbing our own Spanish Fork Homegrown Cowgirl Champion. There's a lot more to be said of her than that, but if Morgan Beckstrom, if you would come in, come on Mom, you can come in too. Yep, come right up here to the front, and we want to hear about what you've been up to now.
Just rodeoing.
Just rodeo. Now rodeo at the Spanish Fork Fiesta Days rodeo? Understand, in the Slack one night or no?
No, that was my sister.
Your sister did that. How'd she do?
She hit a barrel, but it was tough, but it was okay.
Hitting a barrel doesn't win you buckles.
You don't have to.
Okay, he knows that. Okay, but where you were at was the high school finals, right? Where are they held at?
It was at Gillette, Wyoming.
Okay, in Gillette, Wyoming. So this isn't just the Utah High School rodeo.
It was nation, national, yeah.
So we're competing at the National High School Rodeo in Gillette, Wyoming, and I think we have a video about what your winning run was. Bumped it.
Yeah.
What was the time, Morgan?
Sixteen eight, nineteen.
Wow.
Yeah.
Sixteen eight.
Would that have won our rodeo, Seth?
Yeah, arenas have different patterns, different sizes, so it's hard to compare to other.
Yeah, it was a standard pattern. So Spanish Forks is a standard pattern, and this is a standard pattern.
This is standard too.
Yeah.
So she's gonna say yes.
Yeah.
Mom is definitely saying yes.
Now, I'll go ahead.
I was just gonna say, so you won it?
Yeah.
For our national champion.
Yeah.
She has done this before. We've given her an award before, but I remember every night of the rodeo when we were watching the cowgirls run those barrels, and you were just hoping for sub seventeen. You're like, oh, this one's got it, this one's got it, yelling louder and louder, and then everyone was like seventeen one, seventeen two. That was really fast. So to see something sixteen, sixteen eight.
Yeah, yeah, that was really fast for standard.
That is fast. And that horse, remind us of the horse's name?
Slingshot.
This is Slingshot. Yeah, this is Slingshot of the Goodbye Lane, right, which is becoming very famous in the circles of barrel racing horses.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, what else you want to say? You're here in front of millions of viewers and.
I just want to say thanks to everyone that supported me and everybody that helped me get there and everything. But yeah, it was really fun.
With Mom and Dad, good grandparents, everybody that supports you.
All my family.
Yeah.
How old are you?
I'm sixteen.
Wow.
Yep.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So she's barely old enough to drive, but she certainly knows how to drive a horse. I hope, Morgan, I truly hope that we run out of things to say on a certificate for you. You're just such a good representative of Spanish Fork, of the sport of rodeo, and so we want you to just know how much we appreciate the good work you're doing, the good stuff you're involved in, but that you, the way you carry yourself too, and your family does as well, we hear about that, and so we applaud you for that as well.
Thank you.
So this says, this is a certificate of excellence. This certificate is proudly presented to Morgan Beckstrom, NHSRA World Champion Barrel Racer 2022. Congratulations. We'll see you again here next year.
Thank you.
Good job, Mike and Jody. Good work.
Thank you, guys. Okay, if that's not one of the cooler things that you get to do in council meetings, that's just awesome. Okay, we'll go to item number five, public comments. This is any public comment that anybody would like to publicly address the mayor and the council. We do have a truth and taxation agenda item later that if you're here to speak about that, we'll invite the public hearing for that in just a little while. But this is general public comments that is every meeting to the council. So anybody that's here to make public comments, yes, Mr. Pryor is on the agenda for those. So we'll let Mr. Pryor, Paul Pryor, go first, and then anyone after that. We try to limit these to three minutes as well. We'll let you know when you get close, Paul.
I'm sorry, you're so, I said I'm up.
You're up, you're up.
Buck and shoot number one.
Buck and shoot number one, yep.
All right.
We'll give you the signal, Paul, when you're close to your time, if that's all right.
Yeah, just if you counted me when I was walking in, I'm almost done.
We don't count that. No, we're gonna give you time.
First of all, thank you for your service, beautiful community. My last name is Pryor, but I am a Swenson, full cousin to Ray Allen, Clyde, and I think there's probably 5,000 other Swensons. Maybe I'm related to some of you. Lynn Swenson across the river from me is a cousin from another mother. Okay, I live in the river bottoms. Swensons and I, we probably own 25% of the land there. I'm speaking for myself, not for other people, but I know there's many that feel like me. We went to the meeting in November concerning the TDR. I hope it's a dead horse and you won't try to resurrect it. Just a fraction, I and I think others feels like we're Ukraine and we're being invaded, if you will. We'd like to extend an invitation, or I would anyway, to work with us on what I call the midway compromise, which is selecting the best of open epic energy country communities. I had to memorize that. Similar to Midway, Utah, the best of Heber, the Wasatch back, the best of Salem, Woodland Hills, and we don't want high rises there. There's a few that do. They have development ties. But a few months ago, I was talking to council member Beck, and she said there's no place to build a multimillion dollar home. If Steve Young wanted to bring his home and his horses down here, he couldn't do it the way things are now unless he bought 40 or more acres, which he could. Might be a good investment for him. Anyway, I would, in the spirit of compromise, if you could work on a midway compromise with us, we'd love to join the city. But if you maintain the one residence per 40 acres, it's a no-go. It's just unreasonable. And I have given T20 a letter concerning State Road 164 extension. I won't go into that great detail. But number one, we all need to respect the river. We're in a drought cycle. We forget what 4,000 cubic second feet of water looks like. So number one, work with the river. Instead of 2,000 acres, narrow it down to three, to four, maybe 500 max of a river park, and really bring the best out of it. And until you need baseball vines or something else, let cattle graze or be crops. But the skeleton of this is, is roads. If you take 164 and go up to 3,400 East, you'd have a beautiful scenic drive that would divide the high-risk floodplain and the moderate, and then FEMA could take this area off the floodplain because you have a levee berm. You don't need them 60, 70 feet high like in Ohio, but you need them five or six feet high. Let the state work with you on that. I and members of the 300-acre cove, we call it, ideal place for a golf course. If you ever need a second golf course, that's your spot. No wind, beautiful area. We're working with the county to bring a county road from where Kenny Sang is up on 1100 East down to where the road comes here. I'm done?
You're done.
Okay.
If you can finish up.
But that's the skeleton.
Perfect.
You build from there. You give us reasonable zoning, we'll work with you. Okay?
Thanks, Paul.
I'm done.
Thanks for coming. We appreciate you.
Good day.
Okay, anybody else on the public comments section of the agenda that would like to address the city council or mayor? Yes.
Hello. Again, Derek Gesselson.
Thank you.
I just wanted to bring up my concern with our participation in mail-in voting. I think a lot of people have had, understand the issues we had in 2020, but like more specifically recently with our current, or our most recent general election. I mailed my ballot three days before, and then a month later I get this notice that my ballot was not counted because it was past the deadline. I think this is a pretty common concern, and I know that these elections are held on a Utah County level, so I'm just hoping my voice can be amplified through you guys to oppose these mail-in elections, just because I feel like now my vote wasn't counted in this most recent election, and I feel like it's because of this process. So I just wanted to voice that concern.
Thank you, Derek. Okay, anyone else from the public for public comment? Okay, we'll move on to council comments. We will start on.
My end?
Yeah, I think I started on this end last time. So we're starting on this end.
Okay, I'll be quick with the agenda that we've got tonight. I'm gonna turn the time over to Kathleen Levitt. There she is, President of the Spanish Fork Area Chamber.
Hi, Council. Thanks for seeing me. Thanks, Kevin, for the time. So just a couple of things. We had our first farmer's market on Saturday. We had a huge community turnout. We were so impressed with the amount of people. Our farmers, we had a little bit of a shortage there. There was a couple of freezing issues with the late frost in, back in March already, but it was cold at one point, and so we had some farmers with some low product because of that. But the farmers that did come out, most of them were sold out by 11:00 AM. So we were pretty much done by about 11:30 noon. So we're gonna be having that every Saturday until the end of October. So we welcome the community to come out. Every week we'll have more and more farmers getting their products ready to come out. So it was a really good time. We've got our quarterly workshop this week on the fourth. It's gonna be at 9:00 AM. It's gonna be in-house and virtual. We have one of our members, Dan Manier, he's doing a media presence kind of workshop on how to improve your media presence for businesses because that's more important now than ever. And then last thing, we have a business crawl that will be hosting Mitt Romney will be coming down for South Valley. We're going to be kicking off with a breakfast event at River Bridge Event Center. This is August 17th, probably around 8:00 AM. We're still figuring out the exact timing of it, but he wanted to kind of visit some businesses in South Valley. So we're working with the Payson Chamber of Commerce to kind of host him and welcome him. We'll be hitting at least three businesses through the morning. So we'll have breakfast, then we're gonna do a business crawl and visit a few of the businesses in Spanish Fork and then also over into Payson. So that should be a lot of fun. We'll be welcoming business owners and people from the community that are interested to have an open Q and A with Mitt Romney and his team, and maybe some other legislators there as well. So that's what the Chamber of Commerce is up to. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Then final thing for me. We just finished up an amazing Fiesta Days. Wanted to thank all of the volunteers who helped out with that. That's a huge project that they put on, but specifically wanted to thank our police officers. If you participated in Fiesta Days, a lot of times you'll see that the police officers are out on the streets making sure we get across the street safely. Many times they don't get the opportunities to go to the rodeo with their family, or spend the night in the park, or take their kids to the carnival. And so just wanted to say thank you to them, Chief Johnson, you and your crew, for the work that you guys do during Fiesta Days. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
What about the backpack giveaway? You were in the backpack giveaway.
Yes, thank you.
Is somebody talking about that?
No.
You were talking about that.
Yes, I will. I was trying, I was trying to be brief. I was trying to be brief, but I will, I'll talk about that as well. Last Saturday, Tabitha's Way held their annual back-to-school backpack giveaway at the fairgrounds that they're in the tennis courts. Landon was there. Fantastic event. They gave away, or they handed out 1,600 backpacks to the youth in our community, filled with school supplies. They also united Way. Food truck was there to provide lunches and breakfast for those that came. Awesome, awesome event that Tabitha's puts on each way, puts on each year, and can't say enough about how beneficial they are to our community. So thank you. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Thanks for being there. Councilman Euler, good work. Councilman Marshall?
I'm gonna keep it super short as well. Thank you to all the volunteers that participated in Fiesta Days. We asked probably way more than we probably, I'm not looking at you because you did ask that, but we have asked way more than probably reasonable of you, and you stepped up and you delivered, and you do that every single year, and we greatly appreciate it. We couldn't have pulled it off without it. On top of the police, the fire, the EMS, all those folks that put in way more hours than they probably should have, city staff, I don't know how many times I ran into some city staff member way too late at night, knowing they're not getting paid for this, and they're just smiling away because they're happy to do it. And so thank you for your service. Thank you for your hard work, and it was, again, an incredible week. It is not a day, right? It is, it actually happens on one day, but it is, it is a week, if not a month, and it's growing, and it's amazing to watch. So thank you all for, all those that participated.
Great.
I missed the dunk tank. Dang it. Next year.
You gotta schedule for next year, right? Dunk tank.
Well, there's a story to that, but.
He's in it. Councilwoman Beck.
He's in it.
We canceled the dunk tank. But just to echo what you both said, thank you to so many. Let's start with staff. Emily Harriman oversees such a fabulous event. She is getting things ready at 5:00 AM for the parade. She is just incredible, works with our executive committee, and then all of the parks and rent. Dell, your crew, they were fabulous. Last night we had our logistic meeting, three plus hours of just going through every single event. What was successful? What do we need to tweak to make it better? And I think that's why Fiesta Days is just growing and continues to be better is because we get feedback from our committee and our volunteers, and they're like, hey, we saw this. Hey, let's tweak this and prove this. So anyway, just great job to everyone who volunteered. And a reminder, rodeo tickets are on sale for next year, and they are selling out. So get on that. And then with the library, next Monday night, August 8th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM is their end-of-year summer reading program. Their goal was to read 20,000 books, and they've already doubled that. It's been one of the busiest years at the library, contrary to some residents' belief that people don't go to the library. Our library is hopping. Summer classes and events and contests are busy. We also want to thank all of the businesses that donated to the summer reading program. There's been so many fabulous prizes for our residents. So it's just been a super great community event that people have been able to participate in. So again, if you're, if you have been participating in the program, join us Monday for the party at the park from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Beck. Hard work. Councilman Marshall already mentioned it, but great, great work as the council member over Fiesta Days for us.
Please never, ever leave so that assignment doesn't.
She's staying. She's staying.
Just so you know, if you do not run or you are not reelected at some point in your life, this assignment continues with you.
Goes with you.
So moved?
Yeah, we're not.
Moving on.
Councilman Gordon?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. It's been exciting. Last month and last couple weeks, we finally were able to announce the target, and you know, we legally were not able to. And so I'm in the gas station getting a Coke, and the guys working on the building are like, yeah, it's gonna be a target. They look at me and I can't say anything, you know? It was wonderful because now my wife's gonna get a target, and we went and ate a steak at Texas Roadhouse to celebrate that. And so it's been exciting for the business community, as Kathleen has said. So I'll save some of my other comments for a couple weeks, but also kudos to Councilwoman Beck and all those who are over Fiesta Days, Dell, and all of those that sit on those committees, first responders. Thank you. Thank you to the many, many volunteers, those sponsors, the chairman, and incoming, outgoing, and the current. We just thank you all for your time and service for such a wonderful city celebration. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Argyle?
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to second all the comments concerning our Fiesta Days. It is my favorite celebration. Families get together, enjoy everything that goes on. So grateful for the volunteers, the youth council. Shout out to them. They show up at all these events and help us run these things. We couldn't do it without the volunteers. Absolutely couldn't do it. And the employees that work, I know if you talk to them, these two weeks of Fiesta Days are not their favorite time of the year, but they take care of us, they keep us safe, and they do a job. So grateful EMS and all of them continue their jobs above and beyond. Concerning the target, I laughed because we got a message, and Seth put it the best because it was the best-held secret that we couldn't talk about that everybody else knew about. And to keep us, like Brandon says, we couldn't talk about it. Everybody would say, we know what's going on there. Tell us. And I'd always say, you know what? You can call my wife and ask her, but I can't tell you anything about it. The other remodeling the building. That's all I can tell you. When he sent the text, I sent a text to my wife and said, you want you to be one of the first to know the Kmart building is gonna be a Target. She sent back and said, the whole world knows, exclamation, exclamation. So contrary to your beliefs, when Target and these businesses come in, we're held to that. It's their business. They reserve the right to do that, and we have to honor that. We're excited about Target coming here. Most of the comments I get is, I think Mayor Mendenhall mentioned that he's gonna have to probably take a second job or set up a budget of some kind for Target. So we're excited to have it come. And the backpack, thanks, Kevin. I was not able to go there. That is such an awesome event. We are so blessed to have Tabitha's Way. They serve so many people in our community and surrounding community, and grateful for what they did. They put this together, and it gives these kids a kickstart into the school and the backpack program. It's just an awesome thing. And thanks to them because it's not easy. It takes a lot of organization to get that done and get it over with. Thank you to Tabitha's Way, and we're grateful to have them as our part of our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Argyle. Thank you, everybody. Yeah, I won't take too long either, just echoing what's already been said. Fiesta Days, what a, what a party, what a celebration, what a city to continually pull off something like that, and it's not without the good volunteers, the good, the good people that run it year in, year out. This is my first year as mayor, and so being involved in production meetings every day after the rodeo was, was, I don't know, I thought that's gonna be a couple hours that I feel like I don't have in my day. But what it turned into be was, was getting a little bit of a look behind the scenes that I hope, I hope every citizen gets at some, some point. Just the work, but also the care that goes, that goes into trying to, trying to put on a show. And this is the rodeo specifically, but I know this happens for, for every event. But they really are shooting, shooting for perfection in trying to pull off an event that we all enjoy with our families and friends. And so it was just fun to see, see that come together and see what us as the general public, Doug and I, and other members of the committee see, didn't know about until the next day. Hey, here's what happened. Here's what we can do better today. And so just, just a cool aspect of continuous learning over those fast and furious days. The Cowboys, can't say enough about the Cowboys and cowgirls that come to Spanish Fork, make it their home for a week as well. They, you know, it reminds, again, I think I said something about standing a little taller and a little bit firmer of a handshake. Every single one of those production people, when you pay them for what they come and do for us over a period of time, came up to me and took their hat off and shook, shook my hand and said, thank you. Thank you for having us in Spanish Fork. It's one of our favorite places to go. They don't have to say that. They're already paid, you know, and they got a full schedule to go everywhere else. These are genuine, genuine people that vote us in as a community. They vote as Cowboys and Axe as well, and year after year, they vote us as one of the top rodeos. And it's because of the hospitality, what we show, and the hard work that goes into it, and also 8,500 screaming fans, you know, every single night that makes them want to perform well. So awesome, publicly saying thank you to them that come and put on that show for us too. SFCN, I wouldn't, I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to them for filming all of it. You think this is, you know, just what everybody should come out and do, and we do. We were tired after it for a while because we are, we are doing a lot of activities as a family. Personally, in my family, this was a year that my mom couldn't make it to a lot of stuff. But SFCN, being able to be there and her replaying everything that happened that day to me was pretty fun, pretty special. And so, so thank you from the Mendenhall family, but thank you to the public, to SFCN, such a crucial part of, of seeing Fiesta Days, seeing these meetings, seeing a lot of stuff in town that is filmed. So thank you, guys. Texas Roadhouse, been touched on. Carmel, one of the newest businesses in town. They're packed, two-hour waits, it looks like. Obviously, it was a long time coming. Credit to Mayor Steve Laufson for the hard work and his vision of all the time. Every meeting we're in, he's asking, and you guys, he's like, okay, well, when are you gonna build a steakhouse, right? And everything was about the steakhouse. And so it's fun to see that come to fruition and the patronizing that's going on there. One thing about Mayor Laufson, he did let us know today, and I asked him if I could share this publicly. He and Cheryl Laufson are in Alaska on a well-deserved cruise at retirement, but got the news that they'll be serving their church in the Dallas-Fort Worth, Texas Mission, starting in September. So pretty cool for them, the hearts of servants that as soon as they get done with city service, they move on to other service. So excited for them and to see that come about. Yeah, the Target announcement, it's already been said, the worst-kept secret in the world, but you'll see more about it, I think, in the Herald tomorrow or other publications. But it goes, that's been a lot of years. We've worked on that for a few years here, and, and credit to, credit to many different And credit to, credit to many different parties, but the city, city staff, Seth, Dave's department, and the council being involved in making sure that that place was available, and I think one of the strongest retail corners in the state. It's gonna be successful for them. It's gonna be successful for Spanish Fork City. Not so successful for maybe our wallets, but successful for a couple of different aspects. So, great announcement there. Okay, with that, unless I forgot anything, we will move on from council comments. Item number seven on the agenda, consent items. We're gonna remove a couple of items off the consent item agenda. Councilman Marshall requests to remove items C and D from the consent item agenda, and we'll discuss that after the consent items individually. So, I would entertain a motion that removes items C and D from the consent items. So moved?
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Gordon and seconded by Councilman Marshall to approve the consent items, all in favor. This is a roll-call vote. Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Councilman Gordon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Okay, consent items are approved. Let's talk a little bit about item C and D. Tyler, are you talking about, you come to talk about those? These are real estate purchases. You can see real estate purchase contract, 1,000 South Main, otherwise known as the Bradford property, and ratifying that purchase contract.
So, I appreciate sharing, this is the, Bradford's were the owners of this property here at 1,000 South and Main Street. This was actually approved, land transactions can be approved in a closed session, so this has already been approved. This has actually already been purchased and gone through, so this would be ratifying that contract. Just to give you a little bit of information for those of you that are here and at home, the prior owners of this property, Joel and Maria Bradford, we purchased it for $820,000. It's about .93 acres. There are two buildings on the lot that measure 3,450 square feet combined. And another part of this contract was the ability to lease the home back to the Bradford's until the end of December of this year. So, if they'd like to continue to live there, they could do that. And then, probably should've put this first, but the purpose would be for future expansion of the sports park.
Perfect. Thank you, Tyler.
Any questions on that one?
Nope.
You want me to go on the next one, or you wanna do that one?
Do this one individually.
Okay.
Do them individually.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna, so, we wanna vote to consent on this one?
How does that work?
And then, the next one?
Move to approve the...
Move to rat... Okay.
Not a public hearing, though. Well, we didn't, okay.
So, yes, I'd entertain a motion on this before we go on to the next one.
Motion to approve real estate purchase contract, 1,000 South Main Bradford property.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle and seconded by Councilwoman Beck. This is a roll-call vote. Councilman Gordon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Okay, that one's approved, ratified. Item D, purchase contract for 14 South 100 West, the Brunson property.
So, this is the property located here in this rectangle. We're, those of you that are here with us today, we're here in the city office building. This home recently went up for sale. The owners were Maple Lake Farms, and they have asked for $650,000. The contract shows in there that price. And then, the size of the property, .3 acres, dwelling size, 3,340 square feet. And then, the purpose of the purchase here would be, because of its proximity to the city office building, if we ever needed to expand city facilities in the future, it seems to make sense that that would be a good place for that.
Tyler, do you wanna show the properties to the west of those?
Yeah, yeah. So, I appreciate you bringing that up, Councilman Euler. So, this property here is another home that the city already owns. There is still a resident that lives there that's leasing that back from the city right now. And then, we have the senior citizens' building here. So, you can see that there would be a continual, continual ownership by the city in this proximity here.
Tyler, what do we do with the property if we do purchase it? We're not, it's not getting tore down. We're not expanding the footprint of our office building yet.
No, that's, I mean, that would be years in the future. For now, there, I mean, there are a few options. That would be up to you as the council, but we could either rent it out, or we could use it for additional office space for city employees. Those are probably the two most likely scenarios that we'd recommend.
Okay. Any other questions for Tyler or anybody on this one?
I move to approve the consent item D.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Beck and seconded by Councilman Euler to approve item D on the consent agenda. This is a roll-call vote. Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
I'm gonna be a no. And do you want me to explain now or after the vote?
Sure. Let's go through the vote. And then, you say after. Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Councilman Gordon?
Yes.
That passes four to one. Yeah.
It feels very, very premature. I think Tyler said that potentially, in the future, we may expand. There was a lot of wishy-washy words about maybe, if, then. And I understand it could save them money today, save us money today, but I don't think we have a good, solid plan for it. I don't think there's a good, solid plan for redeveloping the block. I don't think that is in the near future. I think that is very far into the future. It feels a little speculative to me. So, for those reasons, I'm no today.
Thank you. Just so everybody understands on, I think people generally know this, I don't know if I generally knew this before being elected, but purchase contracts, purchase of real estate in the city, done in closed session for a lot of good reasons, good reasons to make sure that residents that pay taxes in the city, when we're buying property that's the city property, that you're trying not to pay overinflated values. So, if it was done in the public, somebody would say, wow, I'm gonna buy that property, and then I'm gonna resell it to the city if the city wants it, right? So, it's a transaction that can be do, done in, Tyler can speak to more of it if we need to, but done in closed session for a lot of different good reasons for the residents. So, okay, appreciate that discussion. That takes us, no other questions on that. We're off to new business. Item 8A, ordinance 3,400 East, annexation reapproval. David Anderson.
Thank you. Really, it's just what we say there on the agenda. It's an ordinance to reapprove an annexation that you approved back in April. There is a deadline that has to be met in order for the Lieutenant Governor's Office to fully ratify approved annexations. That did not happen in this case. So, for that reason, this 26-acre annexation, which incidentally is located just about as far east in Spanish Fork as we can get, between what's currently in Spanish Fork and Mapleton, which is just on the other side of the railroad tracks on the eastern boundary of this annexation area. This proposal now needs to be reapproved by you in order for it to go from where it is right now with the Utah County Recorder's Office to the Lieutenant Governor's Office and just to be finalized. This has been a little bit rare lately, where this property is proposed to be annexed, just with rural residential zoning. There are four homes on the subject properties here in the annexation area. They don't anticipate doing any development or really changing the land use in any way at this point in time. So, it's coming into the city with your approval with zoning that really mirrors what they have right now in Utah County. Whereas, there was a public hearing held with you previously on this one. I understand that that's not necessary to hold tonight. You're welcome to take any public comment if you'd like, of course, but that requirement has been satisfied. So, we are just here tonight recommending that the city council reapprove this annexation so it can get wrapped up.
They just run out of time?
Exactly. I can't remember if it's a 60-day window that they have or 90 days, but in any event, they didn't hit that.
Good, done. Okay. Thank you, Dave. Is anybody here specifically to speak about that that would like to speak, public comment about it? Okay. All right, if not, if there's no questions for this reapproval, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to reapprove the 3,400 East Annexation Ordinance based on the findings in the staff report.
Second. Okay.
He beat you to it.
He did.
All right. Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Argyle for this reapproval. Roll-call vote, Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilman, what's your name? Euler? Sorry?
Yes.
Can we turn these?
Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Councilman Gordon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Thank you. Item B, ordinance regarding camping on public property. Hello, Anya.
Hello, Mayor, Council. This ordinance is in response to a public safety need to prohibit camping or sleeping in public property. Such public property includes streets, parks, park strips, schools, and so on. This ordinance is tailored carefully to include an exception when there is no available shelter space within the 10 miles of the Spanish Fork City. The intent of this chapter is to enhance the public safety, health, and welfare of the residents in this city. The intent is not to violate anyone's rights. We recommend that council approves this ordinance today. Any questions?
I've got one. Has there been a problem with this? Is this the reason why we're creating an ordinance for it? Okay.
Chief says yes.
I'll put that on the microphone. Chief Johnson said, yeah, we do have some instances here and there where people camp or try to camp, and our officers really have no legal remedy to that issue. And so, they're, this gives them the ability to use the law to enforce that.
Unless maybe it's July 23rd in 2050, and they wanna have a camp out to get their spot for the parade? I'm just looking ahead.
Well, and there are, there are certain things where our city would authorize the camping, so...
I say we authorize the 23rd, then.
If somebody has permission from the city to do certain things, and there is, there are signs that camping is authorized. And of course, these are cases that officers deal with. They have the discretion to figure out whether somebody is really camping or doing some other activities.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Anya.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions about item B? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance regarding camping on public property.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Euler. Roll-call vote, Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gordon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Takes us to item E, ordinance amending the city code related to food truck licensing. Nobody likes food trucks in Spanish Fork, do we?
Mayor, Council, the legislature adopted a bill this past session that basically said that if a food truck has a license from any jurisdiction in the state, or, and also if they have a health inspection permit from any local health department, then the city can't require a separate license from the city or a separate, like Utah County, health permit. And we can't charge any fees for any of that. So, it's basically just a statewide reciprocity for food trucks. And so, we needed to make a few changes to our code, and that's what this ordinance does. Any questions with that? Thank you.
Seth, you'll have to remind me, we have some of this food truck licensing to thank our own resident Lieutenant Governor Henderson?
Yeah, very much so.
When she was a Senator Henderson.
Yeah, she was, she was often a go-to for the legislation on these issues, as she studied it. And, yeah, I don't think she was this particular bill, because she was already Lieutenant Governor, but many of the bills that we've seen in the last five or so years have been sponsored or cosponsored by her.
Okay, any other questions for this one? If not, I'd entertain a motion for item C.
Motion to approve ordinance amending the city code related to food truck licensing.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilman Argyle. A roll-call vote, Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Councilman Gordon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. On to item D, an ordinance adopting fire code appendices B, C, D, I, and N.
Mayor and Council, the state has adopted the International Fire Code, but they do that without adopting any of the appendices, and they leave that to the local jurisdiction. If they desire to adopt them, they can. We've had conversations with the DRC and especially with our fire marshal, and he's recommended that we adopt Appendix B, fire flow requirements for buildings. Appendix C is fire hydrant locations and distribution. Appendix D is fire apparatus access roads. Appendix I is fire protection systems, noncompliant conditions. And Appendix N, indoor trade shows and exhibitions. If the city council adopts these, they become part of our fire code applicable in our jurisdiction. The appendices are, basically, help interpret and apply the fire code in general, but they deal with those specific topics. Any questions about what we're doing there?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Any questions for Vaughn or for our fire guy in the room?
Nope.
Fire chief, more stated. Okay. If there's no questions, I'd entertain a motion on D.
I move to approve ordinance adopting fire code appendix A. Appendix B, C, D, I, and N.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilman Argyle. Roll-call vote as well, Councilman Argyle?
Yes.
Councilman Gordon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilman Euler?
Yes.
Item D passes. It's approved. Okay.
Do you want us to recess or adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Gordon to adjourn out of city council meeting, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. Roll-call vote out of this, too? Or is this just one big yes? Okay, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Okay, we are out of council agenda now. We've adjourned from that. We'll take a two, three-minute break for CD to be burned, something to be recorded from that meeting, and then we'll start our truth and taxation meeting. Am I right?
Yeah, and we might as well fill the air with something, right?
Jordan, sing a song.
Nick has a song. Nick's got a song he's been practicing. It's part of a, it's part of a monologue.
Please, no.
No, interestingly, for state code, so this is for the benefit of the public here, state code requires that a truth and taxation hearing be a separate meeting from any kind